Laughing at something else.
Talking about me, I voted on everything there, but so you vote for. He's voted for two of the few, I just voted for one.
Oh, Dick, can you hear me? Oh, you can.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Dick, hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Probably do this one after number eight on the agenda, so. So be probably twenty minutes is.
Huh? Okay, sounds good.
Oh, send. It's nine o'clock. I'm gonna call a meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. If you please ride, I'll have rise. I'll have Troy lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you.
Item two is a call for public comment. If anybody would like to uh have public comment they can do in person or they can use the telephone numbers of six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Um, and if you have a cellphone, if you could please silence it, um, and if you need to take a call, you could do it in the hall, please. Thank you. Um, item three, is there any conflict of interest?
No, no, no.
Um, number four, uh, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Uh, motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable to approve the agenda. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, number five, uh, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty eighth meeting.
Some more.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman to approve the minutes of the May twenty eighth meeting. Um, any additions or corrections? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item uh, six is uh, if Steve would come up, we need to uh have an action on the extension parking lot project.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Steve.
Um, I don't know if anybody has had a chance to read the email that I sent out yesterday.
Yeah, I did.
Got copies for you from Banner. Go that way. Shovel through. Um, as of first last week and so we did the bid opening, um, Banner did have a chance to go and review them all. And and it is up the choice to be able to for the commissioners to um, either take the um, construction bid with um, with the alternative one or alternative two. Alternative one is the cement, the Portland cement um of sub base and then option alternative two is the fabric and six inch um gravel base. Um, of course, the bid somebody had from Dunick for the alternative one come in at five hundred and and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. Um, the base bid plus alternative two come in at a low bid of from J and J Earthworks um, for five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and five cents. Um, the difference between the two is seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, also, he had uh, sent out to Geotech and so that because he's of course, he's not an expert on um, with the sub base, but um um, Geotech had recommendations that basically the um, the cement stabilizer would actually probably improve the upgrade of the soil underneath and have a longer lasting life for the asphalt. So my recommendation would would go with the cement sub base, but I mean, of course, this is choice of from you guys to to uh, make on that recommendation.
Which one?
Alternative one.
So the, so the uh, Geo- the GeoTech basically recommending alternative one.
Right. Just because the long, yes, yep, the process and so we had and making the life on the asphalt to be longer lasting, so we had on that. I know when we were in the meeting that was brought up by Geotech when they did all the sub grade testing and they recommended or suggested using that form, but they didn't know what price that that would come in at. So we had had made two alternatives for this uh, project.
And I don't know if you just realize you're not a asphalt guy on the uh, the one with the fabric, that's alternative two.
Yep. So the fabric, what it is, what it does is somebody had they put a fat look, pull off, put a fabric down, lay six inches of gravel over top of that, pack that down and then.
Over the fabric.
Yep, over the fabric.
After uh, talking with Banner on this a couple of times, um and going from past experiences, I like that concrete that bid alternate one, uh, that's kind of a low area out there and I think it would give us more sub base to work with rather than the fabric, which is probably more flexible. But uh, you get more strength from a sub base. It's kind of like pouring a concrete, a vertical or horizontal concrete wall underneath the ground.
If I can give an example, I know um, Rick had on County Road three from basically Waverly going to uh, um, South Shore. They put a mixture of them in so that and that's to help with the base on it to make it more stable and harder and firm. So that this would be using cement on a, on a parking lot area instead of a product like that.
It's not like a cement wall, but they kind of remove part of it and then they mix up.
Yep, they mix up, mix up the concrete and mix up the base and give you a good, then it takes week, ten days to harden and then you've got a good solid permanent base.
But not so hard that you can't get through it in case you gotta find an electrical line.
It just improves the substructure.
I'm gonna mention for to go alternate one. I would second that.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman to go with the alternate one.
So which contractor though?
That would be Dunick.
So my question is, is I guess with both of these bids that we received, alternate one and alternate two, did they both meet the specs that were
Yes, yes, they did meet. Yep, they did meet. That's why he thoroughly went through everything and so we had on the bid specs. And so he went through and outlined. I could turn around and send you guys all the specs that he had outlined and so we had, um, there was a couple differences of some variation on prices, but otherwise all the specs had been met. And in this
Yeah.
With all the bits.
You might be leading to a question. You might be leading to a question. So yeah, the sub code of rules, yeah, we take the lowest bid that meets the specs.
Right.
So.
Right.
So does that?
Yep.
How does picking an alternate that happens to be, if they both meet the specs in particular, we might like a different alternate better than another alternate that costs a little bit more than, you know.
Right. Yep.
How does that, does that affect anything?
So I'm not, I'm not a concrete guy, but if we're talking about seven thousand dollars difference and they both meet the bid spec, I'm wondering why we're going with the higher versus the lower.
The biggest thing it would be is is just because the longer the life stability for having the asphalt for, so it's not busting up and and so we add in time and so we add, um, it just creates a longer life. I know that when we were going through the stuff, they were expecting them probably another ten year extra life on it when we were having discussions back and forth with that sub base over the sub of the, of the uh, gravel alone.
Well, if you ever paid attention to somebody that's done construction and laid asphalt down or even co- concrete on top, uh, over the course of the time, you could spot every water line that's been dug in there. And uh, there's cracks that show up right on those lines where they buried electrical, electrical lines. This would give us more of a base.
I, I think it's more of a legal question though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I'm at with this.
Like, does that affect, I mean, do we have that leeway or do we, do we have?
Well, I would, I, 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 that I could not tell you a hundred percent for sure. I just know that in our contract and so we had that the owner will consider alternatives who based on the bu- base, um, determination of a parent for low bidder, owner will not be required to choose the alternative that is the lowest, but as far as but as far as the lowest bid, yeah, without probably.
I think all of these companies are reputable.
They're very reputable. I'm not denying that one bit.
I just, okay, go ahead. There's a motion in a second, I guess, but.
Any further questions? Oh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, just because I.
Okay, uh, number seven, let's go to our monthly reports. Um, Jody is gone and she left us a report. Um, I'll just go through some of that. Uh, the four H youth are attending four H camp and performing arts camp this week and next week. Um, next week, the four eights shake wagon at Dakota Bank on June eleventh through the thirteenth uh, from eleven AM to seven PM each day. Um, so the youth get pretty excited about public services and this June's dairy month. Um, June eighteenth is Progressive Egg Farm Safety Day Camp at the Extension Complex. Um, Kids Care Babysitting Clinic will be on June twenty fifth at the Extension Complex with registration closing June seventh. Um, there's a Cottington Clark four H horse show in Clark, July first with the state horse show in here in July eighth through the tenth, and that's uh, Jody's report. Um, uh, if Todd would come up for the veterans' service report.
Morning time.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, just first off, if you, if you don't know that uh, eighty years ago today, uh, D-Day started. Um, you see a lot of stuff on the news and stuff like that. So uh, you know, take, take, take a second to uh, thank those veterans that uh were there and some, a lot of them that are not with us today over there. So we'll get right into the, the thick of things here with the metrics. We got a hundred and eighty-eight open claims. We're working out of our office. Seventy-eight that are pending action at the VA and year to date, we've completed a hundred claims. Um, since we'll be addressing our uh, Hamlin County here soon, I just want to give you at least what we're doing there as far as we got eleven open claims uh, working there, one pending and one completed year to date. Uh, currently working uh, twenty-one veterans uh, claims outside of our county or Hamlin County and thirteen that have been completed yet to date already this year. Um, monthly increase of just shy of eleven thousand dollars for April of twenty-four. So year to date, monthly increase, um, sixty-two thousand and some change. Uh, retro payments year to date, but um, four hundred and seventy thousand, uh, last month was um, a hundred and fourteen thousand there on that. Uh, three veterans transported in May, three currently coming up in June. Uh, we did pick up another driver and we did have one of our drivers that was temporarily um, off. Uh, it's back, so we're doing good there. Uh, along with that, um, the VA, I don't know if you've been paying attention. I think I've talked about it. The VTS Veterans Transportation System. It's a uh system that is run by the VA out of Sioux Falls mainly. They have the main office in Sioux Falls that goes out and picks up veterans and brings them back to the VA there. They did one down in Sioux City and now they will be bringing a van and a driver coordinator up here to the Watertown Clinic, uh, still working out the details, but they do have him hired. So we should see that. Uh, with VTS, if a veteran is gonna use that service, they have to be thirty percent service connected or higher. But there's a one eight hundred number that they'll be able to call and coordinate those rides, be it into the clinic or maybe into Sioux Falls, but so that's uh, more, more to, more on that to come. Um, also, the VA put out their geographic distribution of VA expenditures. Uh, referred to it as a GDX. Um, for twenty twenty-three, the, according to the VA, uh, veteran population in Cottington County is two thousand twenty-four. Currently, uh, Cottington County veterans using the VA clinic, uh, eight hundred and forty-three. Total expenditures from the federal government or the VA to Cotter County, uh, twenty-two million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, cop and pen was kind of our area is ten point nine million. Uh, education and rehab rehabilitation, um, just shy of five hundred thousand and medical care um, about ten point six million. Again, basically, all the dollar amounts have, are increases from last year. Um, but uh, the veteran population dropped about twenty-six and VA patients dropped about nine. Um, so that kind of gives you a rough idea there from that standpoint.
So those are just the Cottington.
Those are just, those, yep, those are just Cottington County. I mean, I have the, a roster that came from state that shows all the other surrounding counties. So we're from that standpoint. Um, we did participate. They did have a packed act awareness open house at the Watertown VA Clinic on the fourth of June. Uh, Jay was there from eleven till fifteen hundred. Uh, I did push it out to the three local radio stations. I think they aired some public announcements on uh, the three radio stations here. Uh, as far as I know, there was about twelve veterans that stopped in. Um, we're already starting to work a couple of claims for uh, those, uh, a couple of the veterans that stopped in there, but it was basically there to see if they were eligible for VA healthcare, to do a toxic uh, exposure screening. Uh, if they needed one or if they qualified to have one and then to file a claim, which they were kind of bumped over to our office to handle that from that standpoint. Um, I think here our next agenda will be that uh, we're gonna sign the contract uh, for us and Hamlin County for us to provide that service. Um, I was on the radio this morning at seven thirty at KWAT since that radio station has changed or modify on what he, what you would say with that, but uh, instead of being on there at eight thirty, uh, we're gonna be on at seven thirty um every first Thursday after the first Tuesday, I think is how they say it, but we're gonna be on at seven thirty, so if the veterans want to tune in, it's after, it's, it's, we're every Thursday after the first Tuesday. That makes sense.
Which would normally be the first Thursday after the first Tuesday.
I don't know. That's what Phil always says. He says, it's this day. Okay, so I guess they missed it a couple of times. I don't know. So um, that's how they say it. Anyway, so we're on at seven thirty, not eight thirty on KWAT. KXLG, we're still on at nine, uh, nine oh five from that standpoint. Um, met with the commanders um, the other night. Uh, that's all good. Uh, Flag Day coming up on June fourteenth. I don't know. Are there any questions of me? Oh. Yeah, sorry, I lost you on that one. Here, these are some uh, these are poker chips that we uh, had a veteran go out and uh, make for us and donate it. So if you, if you get in touch with a veteran or somebody's asking you a question about veteran stuff, carry that around in your pocket, you can here, give these guys, give these guys a call, so. Then it's kind of a military coin thing too. Some of you might know about that.
Kind of like the army coins or the.
Yep, yep. So we're moving.
We can go down to uh, number eight, um, action to authorize chair to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Hamlin County for their veteran service. If you wanna explain more of that, Todd.
Okay, well, you, you know that uh, this is a agreement and they, they did pass a law out at state to allow counties to kind of work together to provide a veteran service. So um, Hamlin County contacted us since their uh, VSO retired. And um, basically, um, Hamlin County is gonna supplement Cottington County a budget of thirteen thousand dollars effective one June of twenty twenty-four through thirty-one December of twenty twenty-four. Um, and then there'll be another supplement due in January of twenty-five for the period of one January of twenty twenty-five through thirty-one December of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we'll sign this memorandum of agreement. Basically, the VSO will provide um, provide via phone, email or in person at the Cottington County VSO office. Uh, only in limited exceptions will the VSO travel to Hamlin County, uh, be due to shut in or somebody had nursing home or something like that. Mileage would be reimbursed from Hamlin County to Cottington County for that travel. Um, normal business hours, zero eight to seventeen hundred, Monday through Friday, um, unless closed for holidays or app, approved absences. Um, there's no current office equipment requirements for Hamlin County. Hamlin County will maintain a vet respect license per uh, what we have to have. Uh, we've been told, we're looking into that, but as it stands right now, they have to have a license and Cottington County has to have a license for us to utilize that. Uh, we will update the Hamlin County VSO or provide them information for contact on their VSO webpage. Uh, the supplement will be paid to Cottington County under uh, the revenue line for county VSO. Da da da. Um, I get that from Brenda. The cost share is based on approximately ten hours of support per week, a Hamlin County population of sixty-one hundred, a veteran population of three hundred and fifty-three and an average of twenty-five claims processed um, over the last three years. That's kind of what we use to base that dollar figure that we could do. Uh, they agreed to that and Randall Ruda Bush, county commissioner, signed it on their side on twenty-one May of twenty twenty-four.
Almost approve that chair has signed now.
Second.
A motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen to uh have uh, this signed. Um, yeah, I think it's a, a super deal. It's, it's about the main thing is about how we can better serve our veterans and if it's working through this office, great. I mean, that's our main goal. We're not necessarily looking for things like that, but if we can do that, that's great that you guys do such a super job that we can help them.
Yeah.
It's being a good neighbor.
You bet. For stepping up and doing that.
Yep.
So on the vet respect license, so they're gonna, will you use their license on your hardware? Is that how that's?
The, the, what we've been told and state is looking into that is that, so when we log in, we log into the vet respect, the, the program. We have a password for Cottington County. They're saying that um, we need to have a password and have a separate from from half, for Hamlin County, but our, our, our argument is that it's a users agreement and we're kind of arguing this with state that it's a users agreement, but yeah, we're still working on that. Yes. Yep.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
I'll get this done to you back here.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're gonna uh, move item fourteen up uh, in between eight and nine and it's uh discussion of possible action to authorize the chair to sign a uh, CMAR contract with uh Beckenhauer Construction for possible jail construction. Um, Lee, if you wanna.
Yeah, sure. So we have uh, Mr. Dick Strasburg from Tegra on the line. Um, so to answer any questions, but I'll start off and explain. I'll let uh, let Dick um, expound on anything that I might have missed, but um, I'm trying to share the uh, contract here. Um, it's not a thing to share. Okay, so basically, if you recall, we hired Beckenhauer Construction as the, as the construction manager at Risk um, in the process of our pre-design um, of a, of a possible jail. Um, so right now, along with the architect, along with Tegra, Beckenhauer is assisting the pre-design process and their, their main, their, their main role is gonna be to give us a good cost estimate on the uh, on the concept that the architect comes up with, you know, it's talking to the jail, talking to the sheriff about what and, and with the CCGAC about what that should look like, you know, the, you know, the specific rooms and floor spaces that would go into that building. Um, but the other part of it is we, we had to do a competitive process. We hired Beckenhauer to be the construction manager for the whole project if it passes. So the reason this, this contract is so long is because it covers all those details about building a building. So um, and uh, maybe uh, so it's, it's well over a hundred pages altogether. It's three different documents. One of the documents is, that's the one there that, that it's uh, that Brenda printed up for uh, for if we approve this and then that refers to the other larger documents. And so you guys got those on the email, but um, anyway, uh, I'll make, I'll make the motion to authorize the chair to sign this contract. Um, that, right? Then, then we can ask Dick to explain.
Motion by uh, Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen.
Yeah. And you might have put, we.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Hey, Dick, do you have anything to, to add to what I said about, you know, maybe about what that uh negotiating and everything? So, so take your, take your, you know, Dick and his uh, his team negotiate this contract with Beckenhauer for us. That's one of the, one of the the great benefits of having an owner's rep in this process.
So this contract is uh, fairly similar to uh, what we're using uh, right now in Clay County for their jail project. Uh, and uh, it was heavily negotiated on that project uh, because we hadn't worked with uh, Beckenhauer in the past. And uh, so it's a, it's a good, good contract. Uh, and as a side note, uh, Beckenhauer is really, they're doing a nice job on this cost estimate. Um, pulling that together and just providing, you know, kind of big picture input at this point, uh, till we get, you know, a plan that they can specifically uh, hone in on. Uh, and they're, they're doing a great job in, in Clay County. I think if you talk to the sheriff, Andy Howell down there, I think he'd, he'd uh, sing their praises. They're, they're doing a really good job. So we're happy to have them on board.
Um, so the, and the other thing I should add, so it's a lot of the process stuff about, you know, hold, to hold the construction manager accountable and, you know, what, what, what his role is, what the owner's role is, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and then of course costs. So as you know, for the, for the pre-design part of it, you know, the cost is five thousand dollars. So so that's, so we're getting a deal on the pre-design part. So and then the, then the costs um, that Dick negotiated for, you know, as it go, if goes to construction, then that's what this document does. Um, oh, you know, a double N E eight as well, so.
Man, I could add too, that just as a reminder on this, the way this contract works is they get paid um, a percentage fee uh, once it's um, once it gets to the bid stage, they get a um, a fixed fee prior to that and then all the subcontract are bid uh, competitively bid after that. So um, that's, that's a structure of this contract.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Dick. Okay, now we'll go back to uh, item nine, uh, canvas of the twenty twenty-four primary election and action to approve that canvas.
Okay, so I've asked Troy to read the totals for the different contests. You have this is from the Secretary of State's website that I went in and entered. So some of you want to look at this and then you have the public results by precinct. If some of you want to look at this one, just to make sure all of our numbers, or if you want to look at both at the same time, you do what you want. But anyway, we just want to make sure all of our numbers match and balance. So Troy.
Okay.
Okay.
To start.
All right, first ballot date and time was on June fourth at uh nineteen thirty, which would be seven thirty P M, the last ballot date and time was uh processed. On June fourth, twenty twenty four at twenty one fourteen, which is nine fourteen P M. Total sheets processed, three thousand four hundred and nineteen, total ballots cast, three thousand four hundred and nineteen. Republican Party uh two thousand nine hundred and sixteen votes were cast, Democratic Party five hundred and three, nonpartisan was zero. In the state senator for District Four race. Fred Deutsch, two forty two, Stephanie Souter, two hundred, for a total of four hundred and forty two votes cast. State Representative District Four. Dylan Jordan, one hundred and eighty nine. Vanessa Namkin, one hundred and fifty four. Barbara Gunnett, one hundred and forty six. And Kent Row, two hundred and fifty three, for a total of seven hundred and forty two votes cast. State Representative District Five. Byron Kalis, one thousand seventy seven. Josephine Garcia, one thousand ninety eight. Matt Roby, one thousand eight hundred and thirty eight. For a total of four thousand and thirteen votes cast. For the Cottington County State's Attorney Race. Allison Bachan, one thousand three hundred and seventy nine. Rebecca Morlock Reeves, one thousand three hundred and thirty six, for a total of two thousand seven hundred and fifteen votes cast. Cottington County Commissioner, District Two Race, Tyler McElhaney, two hundred and seven. Charlie Waterman, two hundred and one, for a total of four hundred and vote, four hundred and eight votes cast. Precinct Committeeman for Crownsburg Township in the Village. Michael Cole, forty nine votes, Rick Schultz, fifteen votes, for a total of sixty four votes. And for the Democrat Presidential Candidate Race. Mary Ann Williamson received seventy two votes, Joseph R. Biden Junior, two hundred and seventy eight votes. Dean Phillips, seventy three votes. And Armando Perez Serrato received twelve votes for a total of four hundred and thirty five votes.
Chair. Thank you, uh Commissioner Van Dusen.
And we will need action to approve that canvas, and I have a certificate that I would need, I need you to sign three of these, one signature on each one.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson, um any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Get that done before that gets lost in the shuffle, please, that needs to be. Sent certified mail today to the Secretary of State because they will be conducting their statewide canvas on Tuesday morning, June. Eleventh at ten A M. So all of us need to get our information in there to them so they can conduct theirs.
How did the process go that night, Brenda, was it a pretty smooth one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just had one precinct that we ran through twice just to make sure on it, but otherwise it went very well.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, um. Item ten, draw twenty twenty four primary election, post-election audit precincts and races.
Okay, so this is all new. Obviously, if we have any recounts in our county, we will not then be subject to doing this post-election audit. But I wanna proceed with and have it in place in case if if nobody files any um. Petitions for recount, then we'll do this process, if they do, we'll just this will be void, but I just, if you guys are okay, go ahead and get that figured out. Proceed with it, cuz I was going to do it next Wednesday, June twelfth. The post-election audit. And that's just to note it, so this is something new, um we have our races in one. Uh one bowl here, so. Obviously, our state race will be our presidential race because there was only one state race. Thank you. Let's see, please, um. So we had seven races, basically, six is what we will draw from, so we have to draw one of these races out cuz of presidential one, I just left that out cuz obviously we have to do it. We have fifteen precincts, I don't know if you wanna count these, so everybody knows there are fifteen cards in there, yes, and then I'll have you count that there's. Six um races in that bowl.
Three. This is a new, well, these are the official orders, mixing. Sit.
Official polls, I have to make sure I do.
I like the, I like the hearts, the hearts giving a sense of calming.
Is that what that is?
Fifteen here, there's supposed to be fifteen.
Yes.
There's fifteen.
I don't have you count the races, there should be six in here because here's our presidential one, which I pulled out because we need to do that anyways.
Basically, the the deal is one precinct, so this is one precinct, one race. And then, but if there's any recounts, then you don't have.
Then we don't have to do it.
We'll have it on the calendar just in case.
Right, but I also have to have.
All right, six. Six in here.
Okay, so we're good, so we need to do um. We'll do the presidential one first, so pull out one of those. Precincts, and we have to have one that has a hundred votes cast of ballots, so that will be the next thing. Pesca Richland. That one has eighty one, so we will have to draw one more because we need to get to one hundred.
Maybe here.
Come on, Mister Chair. Nope, what's the other one?
Germantownship, Rockville.
Okay, and that one has fifty four, so we are good, let me write this down though, I lost my pencil.
I thought you said it had to have a hundred.
Yeah, it is.
Hundred total.
Hundred total, yes.
Oh, we'll do both of these.
Yes, so those two will have to be counted for the presidential, so we have.
We just gotta keep adding till we get to.
Yep, Pesca and Germantown, you said, right, we'll put presidential. And it was Germantown, okay, okay, you can put them back in, and now let's draw the next race, which will be out of there. Which race we will do?
Oh.
Commissioner race, okay. Okay, so now. We'll need to draw out of that one to figure out what precincts we're gonna be doing, but it's more specific, so hopefully, well, I guess we just draw. Oh, good, C three, C four, that one is actually one of theirs, so that one is good. And let me see how many ballots, yep, we're good, two hundred and thirty seven, that's all we need to do.
A little bit, you get better.
Yeah, okay. We are good with that, then.
What was, what was the precinct for the question?
C three, um C four and Pelican. So that was very lucky.
It's a little different way of doing things, drawing out of the hat.
There's our official.
Yeah.
Post-audit election information, so. We'll find out, though, after today canvassing, the local candidates have three days to submit a petition for a recount. Which would make it Tuesday by five o'clock P M. And the state candidates will have till next Friday at five o'clock P M because they go by the state canvas date, which is Tuesday. So we will see, more to come.
And then I uh. Number eleven, that's that's kind of what we went over, no, that's just what we.
Can I just add to the to the election night, you know, I think. Has everybody watched the votes coming in and uh we knew that there was probably gonna be a lot of close races, both on the state and local level. Um you know, if you don't think that getting out and voting is important. Uh this is a good, this these were, there were a lot of good races that demonstrate the need for people to get out, we're talking five, six, seven votes separated, so. Get out and vote and uh.
So with that, we have kind of an also a new ironic sort of thing, as far as a possibility of recounts, we have four races in Cottington County that there could be possible recounts in.
Wow.
So and then once they file their petitions, my office has fourteen days to get them conducted. Each one has to be separate.
Auditor, uh what is the the defining line for the recount, like what is?
So with a few of them, it was like two percent in the state races, there's a whole different formula, but it's two percent for like our our uh local ones.
Okay.
Of the total ballots cast.
Got you.
All new.
Okay, yeah, thanks for. All the work that had to happen Tuesday night, I was up and viewed that and it was pretty uh. Fun process to watch and our integrity in this county is is super, so if people hear a lot about. Worrying about their their votes and all this stuff, this county is doing a super job, so proud of the office.
Um we didn't take a two-hour break and come back at eleven thirty.
Okay, let's move on to uh item thirteen, um discuss possible action to authorize applications for the. DOC R dash E D funding with the Boys and Girls Club.
Number twelve.
No.
Oh, well, you should.
First, sorry, I skipped down there. Okay, yeah.
Doing good, you moved it right along.
Yeah, discussion possible action to authorize application of the DOC Court Resource Grant Funding by the Boys and Girls Club. Number twelve first, go ahead, Louis.
Good morning, Louis Canfield with uh Youth Diversion Program here in Cottington County, I have Rich Ome uh with me as well, Rich Ome serves as our court resource home. Uh in the event that we need uh a place for juvenile uh to stay if as opposed to staying in uh juvenile detention. Um so so this is uh the the first grant we're asking for your approval to sign and support us on is the Court Resource Home Grants through the Department of Corrections. This is a pass-through grant, so the funds are requested through the Boys and Girls Club, uh it's a reimbursable grant, the the Boys and Girls Club exit or exhausts the funds. We request reimbursement from the Department of Corrections and they uh they match that. Um this would be year three of our grant, we have an active resource home, um. So this would supply funding to keep our licensure up to speed, um support the the family for being on call and supporting them when a juvenile is in custody. Um so I'll.
Make a question to approve.
Yeah, second. Motion by Gable, second by Waterman to uh. Approve this funding for the Boys and Girls Club. For the applying for the grant.
So yeah, just so people know what we're talking, so this is all big, big pictures part of the J D A I, one of the components of the J D A I program, um and so. What this does with this resource home does, so we're we're not a big enough community to have like this, like in a separate building, this man where you can drop off a youth that's kind of in between jail, but they can't go home. So this is a situation where we've got um, you know, volunteers in the community that have gone to the trouble to get certified and kind of be like, sort of kind of like a temporary short-term foster home. And you have a, you know, juvenile, you don't wanna put them in jail because they don't really, there's an instrument or a uh basically kind of like a questionnaire that you you apply to. Each situation, uh it's called a R A, it risk assessment instrument, um and then typically uh. You know, a lot of times that that person, they might be under arrest, but they don't, but they're not, that you really don't wanna put them in jail, they don't, you know, they're not violent, they're not really at that much of a risk, but it's difficult to put them back, send them back home. And so this is for those situations, you know, our community is not big enough, our town's not big enough to where that's gonna happen a lot. Thankfully, but we still need people to to do it, so that's why.
Very true, it it has only, we've utilized the Court Court Resource Home two times, um we've been active in the last year, took about a year to. Three, okay, three.
That was right.
Okay, three, well, look at, look at, but it's it's not gonna be used very often, but an example would be a situation, a domestic situation where juvenile and a parent getting some kind of an argument or fights. That and then we use that that risk assessment to see how they score and they're unable to go home because there's a victim in the home. There's no other family members in the community present to take that child, and this is where Rich and Barrett will step in and and take them under their wing.
Yeah, so appreciate it, Richard.
Absolutely.
Not a simple thing.
It's not, it's not, it's a big ask, but we really appreciate Richard Barrett. Should I move on to the next?
Um we have a motion on the table, um is there any more questions or? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to thirteen, um discussion possible action to authorize uh an application. Through for the Department of Corrections, R dash E D funding for the Boys and Girl Club.
Oh. Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen. Um we can go ahead and explain that one.
Certainly, uh this is another Department of Corrections grant that would be passed passed through, reimbursable from the Boys and Girls Club, uh back to the Boys and Girls Club. Um if you recall, a year ago, we did apply for this grant, but we, our focus was more on learning about a uh. It's a center uh to take in youth um to help with the risk assessment process, it wasn't. Really focused on racial, ethnic disparities, this new grant application is focused more on helping um our youth of color that that do go through the juvenile diversion program. Specifically Native American youth, um just we ran the numbers and they they are less likely to be successful through diversion. Um doesn't mean we want to give them less accountability, we just wanna look for alternatives to help those youth and be culturally uh respectful. Uh so some of the uh, some of the funding would support training, we've we've budgeted for at least four people on J the J G, again, get out, the J D A I. Uh collaborative to go to a training for the National Racial, Ethnic Disparities Conference to learn more about ways we can help these youth um. Partnering with cultural advisors, um we've just kind of starting to learn about what what's out there, I've I've learned about healing camps for. For Native American youth, which which seems to be very uh successful for for that group, um so it's it's more of a research year to to sell, help us learn. And um make some partnerships and get some training. Excellent.
Yes, um any more discussion or questions for Louis?
So just uh. So this is again, so this is a grant from. This is, are these state funds or are they ultimately federal funds, you know?
It's a great question, my contact is Jonathan Stewart at the Department of Corrections Corrections in in uh the state.
Yeah, just looking at, guess there's there's some federal money in there, so. I'm guessing.
I would, I would imagine so too as well. Charlie's angry. Other, other questions or more specifics?
Seeing no more questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
If if I could ask, I do need to get signatures on the applications, should I catch you after the meeting then?
Yep.
Yes, okay, thanks so much for your support, buddy.
Yep, thanks. Okay, we already did fourteen, we'll go down to fifteen, um. Action to approve purchase of computer equipment for Trezor's office as budgeted.
Right, so you have that information, yeah, she's replacing. Three workstations, so.
I'll second the motion.
Van Dusen.
I made the motion.
Oh, a motion, motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson, um. For this computer equipment for the Trezor's office, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Nothing for sixteen or seventeen.
Is there nothing for seventeen either?
Or eighteen, so we'll go down to nineteen.
Eighteen. Nineteen, and need action to approve personnel changes.
We had a couple of those. One is for Brandon Jacobson, he is a uh new seasonal hire out at the park. His new step is A A one, new rate of pay is sixteen dollars and seventy four cents. And we have another individual out in the park, it's a rehire seasonal park custodian, Trish Sparch, Sparts, her uh. Um effective date will be June fourth, twenty twenty four, I should have mentioned Brandon's was six, three of twenty twenty four. Um her rate of pay now will be A A number two, seventeen oh two an hour.
Love to prove.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any more questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number twenty, travel.
No travel request.
Yes, um. Twenty one, public notice, a possible form of commissioners could be in attendance.
Yeah.
There it is.
Yeah, it's possible.
Very nice, very something.
While it could be Thursday night.
Thursday Night Live?
Thursday Night Live, downtown Watertown, or Saturday, June eighth, out at Modak Terry.
I have one here, so this brunch, this H R brunch, I'm just looking this up for, it would be a working lunch, I believe, next Tuesday. At noon, I'm gonna double check that to make sure. Um it's to with uh Ray Krantz and Sanford, just to explain Medicare and Medicaid. Uh let me just look here.
It's just for any employees that want to.
It would be just for the board and then Jody and I basically, so that, there could be a quorum there at that. But if you, you will need to let me know, so we can let them know. It will be the twenty-fifth. So it will be the twenty-fifth, uh, working lunch. Yeah, twenty fifth of June, so that's the last Tuesday in June. So if you can kind of let me know if that's something you would want to attend, I can let Ray know. We'll know if we'll be offsite or where we'll go for that. Please.
Okay. Number twenty-two, is there any old business?
Just, uh, Mr. Chair, just, yeah, just continuing on this, the, uh, so pre-design of the jail, so. We've had a meeting, um, with, uh. The, uh, the sheriff and Matt from jail, talked to the architect to finalize the, the sheriff's office spaces within the whole plan of the, of possible jail. So, uh, right now, we're waiting on the architect and, uh, construction manager to come back with us. Come back to us with kind of, kind of a, a concept, you know, kind of a preliminary sketch and then some cost estimate. So that's where we're at right now, and then we'll be looking at, um, looking at that as this Justice Advisory Committee. And then the Justice Advisory Committee should come, come with a recommendation to us. The, the goal is to get some ballot language, which would include a, you know, a dollar figure. Sometime in July, we probably need to agree on that, so that we could have it ready. Uh, I think early August is the deadline with the Secretary of State to have a ballot language, I believe. Does that sound right?
Yes, yeah, by the first of August, you'll, we'll need to be there and we'll have to have it looked over by. State's attorney and all those details.
Basically, we as a board need to approve sometime in July that, that language, so. That's, that's kind of, you, here's an idea of the timeline. So, uh. Based on when the architect comes back to me, we'll set the date for another, um. Justice Advisory Committee, probably, you know, late this month, early next month, so. Let's keep it to three, thanks.
Yep, thanks, Commissioner Gable.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't know if this is old business or new business, but then, and I wasn't in town, so. Did you get help carrying the ballot boxes from the Boy Scouts or?
Uh, so that was something we thought of that evening, we didn't contact anyone, it kind of went away during COVID. But during the general election, I will want to do that, and so I will need some names. I don't know who any of those individuals are, if the ones that we used before are still doing it, I guess, yeah. If someone wants to get me some names and they want to help out for the general election, it would be much appreciated.
Anybody here have a contact with any of the Boy Scout leaders? So they, Randy probably wasn't here. So what they do is the ballot boxes, they deliver them to the south end door. And they have this little army. And, uh, Boy Scout boys and they, and girls, I don't know if they're, but anyway, they tote them all upstairs, Steve doesn't have to, he can just supervise.
Yeah.
You know who the contact was, Steve, if I?
I don't remember, Joel Volk, I think.
There's some, there's some Boy Scout that helped with the cargo.
Someone wants, yeah, give me some names, we can contact them. I think Joel Vaulcraft at one point was involved with some of that, but. Yeah, during the general, those boxes will be really heavy, you know, any unused and that sort of everything.
There is one thing, Brenda, that you could go through, and I found it kind of fascinating. Uh, when they transport the ballot boxes, especially from out and about, say, Crownsburg and et cetera. Explain that a little bit, how it's got to be one Democrat, one Republican.
Right, so the superintendent typically is the individual, so if that's the Republican, then there has to be a Democrat. They can either ride together or in separate vehicles, but two of them from each precinct, even the ones out at the egg, need to transport those ballots. Back to the courthouse, to be counted. And I guess, yeah, since you brought that up, I, I don't want to forget to thank everyone who was involved that day. All the precinct workers, just janitors, staff, everyone, they, you know, without the cooperation of everyone. It wouldn't be as seamless as it is, so appreciate that.
Great idea to have Republican and Democrat in the same vehicle. Maybe they can iron some things out.
Well, it's quite, it, it is quite a process, and it was kind of interesting, and, and living in South Dakota for a long time, I didn't realize that they had to. The precinct workers had to take them into the courthouse.
Right, so that's why, like, our, our elections are safe and secure.
Never thought about that.
Safe and secure, the integrity of all of it.
Troy said we need to have an independent to ride between the Democrat, Republican.
Maybe we'll put a county commissioner in there with them.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you, um. Is there any, uh, I guess we were talking about new business?
Yeah.
It's time for the open, if there's any one for public comment or any calls? Not seeing any. Uh, is there any commissioner comments? I haven't been aware of any, um, executive session.
Uh, yesterday, I did attend the, uh, South Dakota Retirement. Uh, we had a, a, our regular meeting, and then we also had a celebration. It's the fiftieth anniversary of the South Dakota Retirement System. And, uh, we had our meeting early in the morning, and then in the afternoon from two to five, we had an open house. And invited the general public to come in and, and I, I, just in the past year or two, we have moved into a different. Well, no, we remodeled the facility that we ran, so we do have a central location out there. And, uh, we had a relatively good turnout, you know, in terms of numbers, I don't know what they were, but it was kind of a steady flow. All afternoon, and then at, uh, five thirty yesterday evening, we had a, a reception for all the employees. And past, uh, uh, trustees and their families, their wives and husbands, whatever the case may be. And, and so it was a, a very, very good day. Uh, I'm happy to report that the system is financially sound, uh, we're still a hundred percent funded. Uh, July one, which is coming sooner than we want, the increase will be, the call will be one point nine percent. So there you are. That's, you've got to look forward to. And a year out, we know we always look long ahead, year out, the call anticipation will probably be less. So what's happening is we're living too long. And all us old timers, been around here so long that we're not dying off. And we just keep, we have some, we have a number of people receiving, uh, South Dakota Retirement. Uh, checks that are over a hundred now.
Wow.
Yep.
Well, good.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Good.
Yeah, that's all good, thanks for serving on there, Commissioner Johnson. Seeing none other, we need a motion to adjourn.
So move. I'll second that.
Motion by, uh, Vandusen, second by Johnson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Okay, Brenda, and. I have here. Okay.